That's mic one. That's on the down one. That's two. Off with one. That's four. That's first mic one. And five. Code in two. That's on the down one. In one. And two. Code in three. Off with one. Cool. That's four. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Student of the Month Ceremony. We're all so proud to have all of these students here and recognize their achievements for this past month and throughout the school year. We're getting close to the end of the school year and of course recognize their parents, guardians, and the rest of their support system. Obviously they want to accomplish what they have without everyone's help too, this too, especially as a former teacher I can attest to that. So we're going to start with a little ceremony and Commissioner Borum could you assist? Devin Hastings from Brown Pierce Elementary School.
Everyone's here. We'll line up right here. We'll start on this point here. Then as you come up, just come around, just line up side by side. It'll be run through everybody.
Katie Moore, Children's Reading Center Child Score. Anybody here? Paxton Scott, No Crest Capital. Empress Rose, James A. Long. Hayden Hutter, Kelly Smith, Helen Matthews.
That way.
Kayla, Mark Hunter, Melon Learning Center. Danny Hathfield, Mosley Elementary. Harley Neely, Blackberry Street. Alex Zumba, Naiya Baptist. Mr. Todd Sessions, Department Academy of Arts in Fall. Thank you, Alva. Give me a minute. Jerakas Anderson. Can you walk the next farther? Kevin Dino.
Beautiful.
You'll kind of line up over there. You go off and line up. Okay, I'm starting today and she's out here. Well, we can have you up together and we can do it all together. Daya just happened to get away. Thank you. Thank you.
Why are we going to turn? We want to work.
Oh, it's such a cross. Oh, yeah.
That's a good one. Really.
Seven hands. Actually, I'm a thing. You get even then. You got, oh my God. Oh, this is something else.
Thank you.
Welcome to the City of Palaca City Commission Meeting, April 27, 2023. I'm calling the meeting to order. We want to start with the invitation. Matthew Mulberry?
Good evening, everyone. Father, we thank you for this night and thank you for this opportunity to come together once again. We thank you, Father, for how good you have been all day long. You brought us together one more time to do the business of the city. We pray, dear God, for your wisdom and guidance in all decisions that will be made. We pray, God, that you could give us the call and give us how to conduct ourselves in your sight and in the sight of men. Remind us that we are leaders, that we represent you. We thank you for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Ms. Thomas, can you begin us on the pledge, please?
I'm glad we're doing this to remind our audience that it's only ever from into the world for which standards, one fiction, other god, individual, liberty, justice, law.
Roll call, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioner Tammy McAsso here. Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Will Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Rufus Born.
Present.
Mayor Robbie Cray.
Present.
All members of precedent accounted for. We do have a forum.
Thank you. Has everybody had an opportunity to meet the minutes from April 13, 2023?
I'm approving them.
And with motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, move man accordingly. Public recognition presentations. Presentation from the Florida Clubhouse Coalition, Brett Yu, Development Director, Gainesville Opportunities Center.
Aye.
Welcome, Mr. Buell. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me. I wanted to talk to you about a program that we have called Mental Health Clubhouse. Clubhouses help adults living with chronic, severe, persistent mental illness get back into the community, find jobs, and keep jobs. The people that we help are our members, not patients, not clients, because the clubhouse is a place of belonging. Mental illness is a leading cause of work-related disability in the United States. With Rice Ortho, people can and do work again. In our model, we follow a recovery through work routine. Our members come to our center if they first get their medical attention from their regional medical centers or private doctors, whoever give them their conditions. But if they're getting care one day or two days a month, what happens to them the other 28 days of the month? So over where I am in Gainesville, a lot of them will come to the Gainesville Opportunities Center, and they will participate in our work day. So there is no job that is staff-only or member-only. The members get the opportunity to participate in everything that we do. So they help with marketing, they help with reception, they help cook, they help clean. We all do this together. And in doing so, the members in a sense of confidence, they realize, they come in the door all thinking, "I've been unemployed for five years or 10 years. I've been in jail, I've been in a hospital. I have proven to everybody that I can't do anything." And they come to the club and they participate in our work day. And they can do things. And they think, "I can't do that," and they try something, they do it. And you just see over time this transformation. They get a big smile on their face, like, "Wow, what I just did?" They see other people that they've met in the system, that they've met in hospitals. They see other people succeeding. They see other people moving on and getting jobs, moving forward with their life. And all of this is a transforming and empowering process. And it just helps them go through incredible metamorphosis. One of the things, if any of you guys ever get over to Gainesville and want to come see our center, which is very much like the 350 clubhouses around the world, you'll come and you'll see a lot of really happy people in there. You'll see a lot of smiles. You'll see a lot of people feeling like, "I can be myself, I'm not being judged." Smiles and laughter are things that you would associate with a mental health treatment facility, but that's what's going on at the Gainesville Opportunities Center. People are becoming happy, people are proud of their accomplishments. The way this model started years ago is in the '40s, they were letting people out of psychiatric hospitals in New York. Somehow or another, they got a place to congregate, and they use it as a base to try to look for jobs. And they didn't have anybody to help them, there wasn't any support. And so they needed somebody to answer the phone, they needed somebody to take messages. So a number later, they have people, you know, there all day, so somebody needed to make coffee, somebody needed to make lunch, somebody had to clean up. And so now you had all these people coming out of the psychiatric hospital that, you know, especially back then, they thought couldn't do anything for themselves. And here they are, not only helping themselves, but they're helping other people. The social workers noticed it in the 1960s, and they kind of helped organize it, and that's how the clubhouse movement was born. Now, again, you know, 50 years later, we're looking at 350 clubhouses worldwide and 14 in Florida. That sounds like a lot, but there are 67 counties in Florida, and there's only 14 clubhouses. One of the biggest obstacles to people getting our services is transportation. People that we're helping are mostly living below the poverty line. Most of them don't have a car. Most of them don't have a way to get to our services. And even though we do not charge anything for our services, they can't get them. By the way, most of our funding does come from the Florida Department of Children and Families. And we are contracted for mental health, clubhouse services. So that is, it's a real category. It's also a Medicaid category that public health centers can bill for as well. So that's just a little bit of background information on that. Over the past few years, the Florida Department of Children and Families has gone to a recovery-oriented system of care emphasis. So, you know, we have this, we have, it's a never-ending cycle. Somebody gets hospitalized, they get baker-acted. And they're in the hospital for three days or week, and then what happens? They get let out and they get put back in their environment, and then there's no support. They don't have a job, maybe they lost their job or they went to the hospital. They don't have anything to do. They might not even have any medication, they don't have money. So what happened? They go back in the hospital, it's a never-ending cycle, and a three-day hospitalization costs 10 grand. And so you get people that are hospitalized five times a year, 10 times a year. The government, the taxpayer, has made a lot of money for these services that while they may end up saving the person's life, are not really rehabilitating or giving them a path back like they need. And that's what the, that's what the clubhouses do. My point today is that I just wanted to educate you guys about our process and what we have over in Gainesville, that as part of the Florida Clubhouse Coalition, we are advocating for the expansion of clubhouses throughout the state. We hope that maybe at some point, Palaca, Putnam County, and a coalition may get together and start a clubhouse here in this vicinity. So is it okay, can I stop for a moment? Are there any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Mulberry? Questions for the fund and project, and I thank you for being touched on that.
Yeah. I believe you guys got some of these materials. And in this material, I wanted to point out that of people that have participated in the mental health clubhouse, and this is, again, this is a severe, chronic, persistent mental illness population. If they participated in a clubhouse in Florida over the past year, 89% reported an improved quality of life, 98% achieved fewer or no psychiatric hospitalizations, and 97% report fewer or no encounters with law enforcement. And so what the clubhouse process is doing is that we are making lives better, and we're also saving the taxpayer money. We're helping people work again. We have a program called Transitional Employment, where we have an agreement with certain employers, they let us pick somebody to go into that job. And they don't have to interview. We end up training them in the job. So our staff goes in and works with them until they get up to speed, so they're not working with strangers. And then we interact with the bosses, you know, if there's any problems, if there's any reason we need to go back. Because, you know, chronic to, contrary to the law, I'll admit, you know, more people with mental illness are not dangerous to others than dangerous to themselves. They don't, they lose their activity levels, they don't care if, you know, they might have a job, but they don't care. And then they lose their housing, and then they lose everything, and then it starts viral starts. So we need to look for restorative, humanistic ways to help people get a path back in a clubhouse is one way to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation, and I agree. And I also saw on the packet that the funding was a combination of DCF, Contractor Plan, County City, and other sources as well.
Yes. Yeah, so.
Do you have a budget for your program?
So our particular programs, all the clubhouses in the state are independent, and they all have different budgets. Some of them have much larger budgets than ours. But you really need about half a million dollars to run this program, because you need five or six employees. You need to be able to give field support to go out and help people with employment, things like that. One of the things we've accomplished in the Florida clubhouses by coming together is that the Florida Department of Children and Families has put a line item in their budget every year for clubhouses. We have sent prior lobbyists, and there were, there would, you know, obviously I can't guarantee it, but there would probably be some seed money from DCF to help start a program. But the seed money wouldn't be enough to run the program full-heartedly. It would need private support, it would need city support, and other things. City, county, some examples of things you could do is if you have meeting space, you have a place where they can come together. You know, even if you didn't have a lot of money to pay somebody, I know that in Elatito County, there's a lot of unused space that they have here and there. And so those are, those are some things that you guys could possibly do to help get a clubhouse off the ground.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Best, you looped into the comment on the topic. Three minutes, name and address for the right, please.
My name is Eddie Best. I live at 200 H Drive in Elatito, Florida. And Mr. Brett spoke about everything with support. The word support is so very important that if you had an agency, you could go through people that understand and know pretty much the law behind some of these things we walk into, like building an apartment. Instead of going to DCF or the Department of Housing Department, you have an agency that's backing you to get you a housing. In our county here, I tried it a few times with different people. The door is closed. With our public service as you are, we can break that ceiling and have a person from our clubhouse to go with a person to these meetings with housing, with children, with schools. Another thing that I did in New York, or we've done in New York with clubhouses. Little children, young children from junior high school, don't know what mental illness is, really. We take it to the schools. I'm not afraid. I know how I do. We teach the children that you walk around and you see people that you think they're okay, they're somebody. No, a lot of them are sick. And I give them my experience, because I was hurt on the job. I woke up one day and I was a different person. Was a different person. I didn't know how to think properly until I wound up in a shelter after having a home. They promised me this, they promised me that, and we are achieving the park highway, the whole building. I worked, I do nothing but work. They promised me this, and the other day when people came down to legal, walks through these contracts, no longer is there. With clubhouses, I did, we have legal people, strong developments like this to walk with us. So we're not pushed aside when they have a mental illness, I will put them to the side. This is what we're helping them, and I have a few stories to tell you about that, because I'm going through it right now. But that's not.
You know, you have a lot more time, though, so.
God bless you guys. Please help the people that can't help themselves. Oh, no, we have people sitting on the corner of the cops. Those people get hurt out in the street, who pays? We pay. And it does get better. It does get better, but we have to give it just a little time. It is here, they need to understand about mental health, so they don't go out of this room that we find ourselves in.
Thank you, Mr. Best. Next, we have a proclamation for Hurricane Preparedness Week. Is there anybody here?
Yes, ma'am. We do have Danny Rich, I mean Danny Rich, so sorry.
Don't you really go down to me? Um, could you read the proclamation, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Roberta M. Cray, Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim the week of May 1 through May 7, 2023, as Hurricane Preparedness Week in the City of Palaca. And we urge everyone in our community to act now and make their families and homes stay alert.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. There you go. Would you like to say a couple of words?
Yeah.
Please go to the podium. You take our picture first, if it's real. Please go to the podium, and you take our picture first if it's, if it's relevant.
Hi, I'm Danny Rich, uh, Putnam County Emergency Management Specialist and KIO. Um, this is one of the things that I'm very enthusiastic about, um, hurricanes and specially preparedness. We live in Florida, this is a season that takes six months out of our year, and the other six months we're pretty much either somebody's recovering from it or we're preparing for it. Um, this, this year, the, the themes are going to be know your risk, wind and water. As we've dealt with Ian and Nicole, um, water is an issue, especially if you live along the river, there are areas that flood. Um, be prepared before the season starts, understanding the forecast information. Being able to tell the difference between what the cone is and what the cone represents is very imperative. The storm itself can be very large, it can be a lot smaller, but just because it's not in the cone doesn't mean you're going, you're not going to be affected. Um, when a storm threatens, that's when you get started moving. Stay protected during the storms, do not go outside, please. Um, use caution after the storms, people do have accidents, there are deaths, there are illnesses that occur after storms from Phoenix. And to take action today, um, go about your days. If you want to start, when you go birthday topping this week, grab a couple of cans of food, grab a can of dinner. Get ready over the time, so you don't go and spend all your money, um, à la once. And uh, special needs registration, those do have to be, they to do those, you submit an application and it goes through the Department of Health for approval. Those are the people who either need transportation assistance, or they have a caretaker and they, and don't electricity. Um, and they have a special filter, you need to go ahead and get those um, applications in as soon as possible, we can get them in the system and process them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now to recognition of Larry Bland S. One.
Is there a proclamation for your red?
Not a proclamation, but we do have a file.
Okay.
Would you like me to read the plaque, sir?
No, I mean, you asked me to do it, so. And honestly, Sonny should get all the credit, you know that. But I guess I have the um, distinct pleasure of leading off, giving you some accolades, I'm sure the commission will want to say a few things too. So, and uh, Ms. Thomas, I know you didn't plan on being here for long, but it's been three years. You remind us every day that you were just here part-time. Um, we'd hate to see you go, I think that, you know that. And we're hoping you stay a little bit longer till we get through what I'm going to report on in a few minutes. Um, but um, you've accomplished a lot, and we've accomplished a lot. And you were, you're owed a great deal of credit for that, so thank you, really, we appreciate you. And I'll do my best, I, I don't know what the count goes for, but Sonny says for shepherding the city commission and city staff and city attorney from twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two. There, do y'all want to say something? I can take a few pictures.
Thank her for um, all, all the valuable services that you provide, and sit down on our legal services, and coming out of retirement. And now she's trying to go back into it. Again, we want to thank you for all your legal advice that you've given us over time and your friendship as well, so um, uh, welcome to retirement.
I'd also like to say, um, welcome to retirement again, but thank you so much for helping lead us in a time where we as the City of Palaka needed true directions, true uh, attorney's direction. I know we had three attorneys sit at one time, but we're in terms of grateful for you, don't get grateful for all the questions that you've answered of me. I'm grateful that wherever we went as a commission, you were there, not just locally, you were there with us on the state level. Um, everyone knows you, um, because they know Palaka, and I think we're a better place because of your leadership, uh, your legal counsel. And hope that you, once you go into retirement, that you won't return to nobody's job and you actually enjoy it.
It's safe, safe to say that you are actually retiring, however, if you are. You know, they say they're retiring, and they really don't. I would love to keep you, but thank you for the time that you spent with me, listening, providing, um, the words we've been. Thank you for choosing to come and work with us. Thank you, and enjoy, if you so choose to.
Well, that's it, I'll ask you, thank you for your service and enjoy retirement.
Thank you.
I'd like to hand you a chair, we didn't, I would say didn't spend as much time, so it'd be else with you, but thank you for your patience and your legal leadership. And enjoy your retirement, I hope you can see us.
Picture.
Give us your time.
Did you want to say something? Thank you, alright.
Thank you.
Um, initially I said I didn't have anything to say, but that's not true. I want to let you know how much I enjoyed working with everybody here, this is a fabulous team that they have in the City of Palaka. And I have learned so much. Um, as you know, I started out as an attorney in Ninety Days County, where I served for thirty-three years in various departments. So, but I appreciate the faith, the support that you have given me over these three years, and thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. In the spotlight, Ms. Jones, who are you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, commissioners, um, just to recap in quick, last year, what do you think to, we started um, this program to begin to recognize our employees on based on different criteria that we give any employee as well as department heads the opportunity to recognize or submit um, nomination form. And this month, for the month of April, the City of Palaka would like to announce its employee of the month, Miss, Mr. Jackie House.
So, you want to take a podium? Oh, I can check the podium. Jackie's running away, but. So um, this is, this is great, I get to work with Jackie daily, he is definitely deserving. But I figured I'd take this opportunity to kind of give you an idea of everything that she does, and um, by no means is this everything, this is just probably the most important or the highlights. Jackie takes initiative with every problem, hurdle that comes to the department when dealing with grants and projects that we bump. She is a true member of the team and actively participates in brainstorming sessions. She likes to tell me that I need subtitles. Um, she is a valued and essential member of our team. She keeps track of and prepares the necessary reports, as well as the financial reimbursements and closing packages for all of our grants. She is consistent in ensuring that all necessary paperwork and payments to contractors, vendors are correct, properly authorized and paid to its family manager. She has an exemplary attendance record, although you were off yesterday, right? And she's invaluable to our team. And she also serves as delays on between the General Services Department, all your other operational departments, and the Finance Department. Every day Jackie keeps over sixty million dollar worth of projects running smoothly with her contributions. She does not procrastinate, is short away from responsibility, she is dependable, reliable. If she says it will be done, you can count on it. Jackie, thank you.
We're going to have to take a photo.
Oh yeah, need a photo.
City manager report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, keeping with the um, standard procedure for meetings for rehearsed during the month, to keep this brief, um, just wanted to give you an update on some positive things. Uh, Legal Services RFP has been advertised, deadline is May twenty-second. I'm happy to report myself, Mr. Holmes, um, met with Scott Legacy with Black Boathouse Marina. And I believe Ms. Thomas has put the finishing touches on the agreement, we're expecting him to sign that shortly. Signed the closing paperwork on Tammy Hall this week for the vacant lot, uh, so that lot is sold. Whoa, yeah. We're also trying to schedule the closing on the Tier Woods Stormwater Pond. And so hopefully within the week, we will have ownership of that and start scheduling the necessary maintenance of that pond. And the deadline for your departmental budgets, uh, from department heads is due tomorrow. Um, sometime next month, most likely after Ms. Carty is on board, you will receive a notification to start preparing your commission priorities for inclusion in the draft budget. And I did want to report, uh, that the listing agent for Hammock Hall, Mr. Mark Spaulding, has advised us that for the remaining vacant land and building package, he would suggest that we reduce the list price to one ninety-nine to see if we could generate some more interest in that listing. So if you so choose later tonight and want to take that as an emergency item and give that recommendation, we would then make that adjustment to the listing. And the only other item I believe we have a report on is from Mr. Cutright, if we wanted to give you an update.
No, I'm going to play forward, as he comes, I have a question. What's the anticipated um, date by our finished date for St. John's Avenue, that's out near, um, Saliris.
Mr. McNamara, do you have that date?
It was intended to be within the next six months, unfortunately, they have run into some conflicts with the materials and potentially the entire scope of where they intend to end the project. Um, we're trying to, is communicate shutdowns and early shut offs uh, in our area with the customers there. Believe we were, if I'm going to reach out, maybe um, speak to the MOT in the area. At this point, I do not believe we know the exact date.
Okay, simply because I've received phone calls where the residents are cutting through um, the nursing home and it's becoming a problem, so that's why I'm trying to give some answers, but I'll be off with her.
Thank you.
Mr. Cutright?
I just can't really give you a small snippet of what happened that Thursday, and I write the light to bright form educational meeting. And my, my staff, I think, went very well, we had about seventy-five people show up, including the wonderful officials and a lot of people in the audience, we tried to educate them on everything that we had going on. Um, the steps are still the same material that are there, uh, we're moving forward. But then again, we want the community to can realize that we just want to apply into the city. Uh, you have us, and we will move forward to bring this gym back to a nice look, shining thing that you can see, uh, Palaka is a wonderful place. Four years ago, I, I wouldn't have said that, but since I'm here now, I am very enjoyable piece that I've got everybody here and that Palaka is a wonderful place to live.
Great work you got me doing, and um, yeah, I wish I could have been there last, um, Thursday. No obligation, and I could not, um, afford to not be there, so.
And you did have me there, and I appreciate the security, uh, support that you gave me through the phone and your text message, it's awesome, thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other leaders from the class?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Wanting to open the floor up to public comments. We have a couple of folks that have committed a couple of comments, Stephanie Danzler Curry. Are you here?
Yes.
Okay, so could you please give the name and address?
Stephanie of McCurry, two two three Red Drive, Black Forest.
Okay, in about three minutes, please.
Yes, um, recently, um, I have a son out at West Oak Cemetery. And just recently, I had um, a staff that was from the city to tell me that um, I can place a game slash ear camera out. Uh, my son, that is in September, and September, October, November, um, his, his plot had been vandalized. Um, every time I went out there, they were pulling up his um, um, the name marker and everything like that. So I spoke to Amanda, and um, I asked her, what could I do about it? And she was just, she told me that it was, she didn't see anything on the regulations that we couldn't have in game slash ear camera, so she had told me that I could put it up. So I put the camera up to try to find out who was vandalized. Uh, my son is on property, and then recently I gave a um, email saying that um, I had seven days to get it down. So I had a meeting, uh, I think it was Wednesday, with um, the city manager who um, made the decision to um, have it taken down. But um, I wanted to ask the commission, first I believe, I'm sorry, um, I want to ask the commission that um, the commissioners are the ones that set the policy, not staff. The rules for the cemetery were adopted by the commission, and any change should be made by the same policy makers. Um, if the city would have put the cameras, the security cameras up years ago when the vandalism, the crime and the homelessness was at the cemetery, we wouldn't have this problem. So now if my child is out there, or his body is, his moment, um, his, yes, his, um, headstone and things like that are out there, I don't want to go out there and see the hell. If you don't have anybody out there, you wouldn't know what to tell you. You wouldn't. That ear camera didn't hurt anybody, it's security for me and my child. So, it really upset me because that's security for me. And I was told that if I'm going to try and put cameras up, but it never happened, now I was forced to do it. Now I'm the bad guy, not really the bad guy, but I'm doing my best for my child. So I want y'all, please take that in consideration.
Um, so Ms. Curry, that you're, uh, city manager Holmes, uh, directed staff to remove.
Um, so Ms. Curry, that you're at, uh, city manager Holmes, uh, directed staff to remove the camera. Will tell you, um, that there is no record of the commission authorizing installation of cameras on any cemetery property or on any public property. Um, so in the absence of that, we're operating under the assumption, uh, that cameras are not permitted on cemetery property, uh, for surveillance.
Okay, the city installed. Ms. Thomas, um, sorry.
Okay, additionally, um, I was present at the meeting with Ms. Curry's folks to the manager. And this is city-owned property, um, in, in city installing cameras, but there's another level. A lot of nations have, uh, have proposed that surveillance cameras in operation to advise the public. There was an opposing telling there are not any cameras, um, that are included in the roof, but there's none of those that can be also posted. So what we have is that, um, we also found out there was an additional camera that has been in the cemetery that was unknown to, um, the manager's office or for me, and, um, we asked that that camera also.
I have, um, um, concerns. And I think there's a few things to feel back while we're dealing with this. One, as a city, we have an obligation to protect, um, that which is owned by us. We have a duty to make sure that no one who was laid to rest is not able to rest due to vandalism of any sort. So we as a city have an obligation and I'm making the recommendation that we look into bringing, uh, surveillance there. Just so that we are able to give our families that assurance that their loved ones is resting in peace and not having to deal with vandalism of any sort. Um, this matter, I believe, has come before the commission before and not so much with having camera there. But again, we have a duty to protect, um, our property as well. Also, there's an issue that I have when you have an employee saying that there can be something that I put out there and now it's a she being told that they can't. I think that's a management problem, um, that we need to address because again, if it's not written in policy, no one should be given direction with regards to anything that goes against or without policy if it is not written. Uh, again, she went off the assumption from somebody from the city level, um, a city employee, and she acted on what she was told. So there needs to be, that needs to be addressed as well.
Um, who should have gone?
Um, I, I wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Campbell on that. And again, we need to make sure that, you know, dignity and respect are given to those who passed on it. In no way we should have vandalism going on in no respect, especially for those who have passed on. Um, again, uh, with, with the same thing, the staff member, um, making any comments in regards to what to do or what not to do. If it's not policy-driven, then they should not speak on anything along the over line. So that's my, my point. I wholeheartedly support it. We need cameras, um, out there, like the commissioner of cameras say. Thank you.
Commissioner. That's what I agree with Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner. I think the camera thing, her is that the security and it feels, she feels herself the world was snatched from up under her. However, I think that this matter needs to be brought before us, be discussed as an agenda item and look at whether or not we're going to bring the full surveillance out there. Um, again, the employee making the decision without one of these proper channels, the issue that I have. Because if I feel that we would have gone to the proper channel, we wouldn't be here now. And I have a loved one out there and I feel you. I live on the street and I know exactly how it feels from various sides. There we're here. We're going to do what we need to do to make sure that we create this thing. Thank you.
So have the camera been removed or is it still there this time?
It's been removed, sir.
So it's been removed, aren't us having any policy on it? So this commission moved the, had the camera replaced back out there until we actually create the policy? Because she says more than one of them already.
Um, well, Captain Thomas.
Or, or put a sign out stating that it is available, others available.
But we have, these are, this is not a camera that has been authorized by the city or placed there by the city. So putting a sign saying that it's under, on video surveillance implies that this is under the control of a city in Black. It is not. It's not the property control. We have the policy, rules, regulations, anything governing the placement or the collection of that on this camera.
Again, um, did the camera, uh, do the camera being out there right now violate any rights at all? Is there any rights of privacy at that cemetery or any, um, of city owned?
Supreme Court has dealt with.
I can't even.
I'm sorry, the Supreme Court has dealt with the rights of, um, privacy in a public space, and that's by governmental action. This is not governmental action. This is Curry placing a camera on a public space for, um, the collection of videos. So by us saying that she can, you know, do this, if we're going to, um, if the commission would like to approach this, then it should be something that is done at the behest and the order directions, policies and procedures of the city of Black. Not citizens installing cameras on public property without any guidelines, rules, regulations, concerns, or anything about what goes on and what is captured.
Okay, so I'm gonna let it go. So Ms. Curry, obviously it involved the vandalism to the police department.
No, she did.
Okay, has that been reported?
Only to the city. No.
In the police?
Well, no, uh.
Cemetery.
Cemetery in the works, yeah. Yeah, but I did have, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You know, let me stop. But, um, but I did one night have to call the police out there because, um, there was someone at my son's site with no clothes on, her shirt off and everything. And once I went out there, um, he was laying down. Before my son got his slabbing and everything, he was just laying out there with no shirt on. It should be on, um, record because I called him from there. And I asked the guy when I went out there, I say, uh, what's my, cause I thought, I was like, oh, is this, is this person that's been tearing up, you know, stuff? And I was like, no, this can't be him. Then when I see him come back with no shirt on, cause I can't see where he goes anywhere around in there, just up in here with my son, where my son. And, um, when I went out there, I say, well, um, I said, what's going on? I said, um, why are you laying down this? So he went saying, um, I need to go to the hospital. And I said, you need to go to the hospital? And he was like, yeah. He said, the voices are telling me I need to come out here. I said, well, why are you laying down there? I said, that's my, um, I said, that's my son, right? That's my son, um, right there with your land beside you. You don't know him. So I ended up to call him because he said he needed help. He said he needed medical help. So I called the police and had them to come out. So that should be on, um, record.
Move it or we're leaving.
I, I don't want to move yet. I mean, we have to, but we, this is something that we need to say.
We need to address that, yes.
Yeah, but so. Mr. McNamara come to the podium once again. Cause I just, uh, it's an apartment issue. I just want to know this is going to be up and available. Every citizen that have a love.
I'm sorry, Commissioner. I just wanted to add one thing that we did tell Ms. Curry that if she had any further issues of vandalism, uh, we gave her a number of the managers and, uh, that she would, we would, uh, call the police and we would ensure that police act and stay there immediately to address this situation and to solve it.
So, so that's what I would like, Mr. McNamara, this is department. Um, upon these vandalism claims, what action do your department take to ensure that of the citizen's loved one are not, they're not, um, perpetrating?
Well, I wasn't aware of the, uh, the vandalism claim until the, the discussion of camera came out. Um, realistically, we acknowledge that we do need to increase securing of the property and intended budget for security in cemeteries in this fiscal year upcoming. Realistically, there really isn't a lot we can do at this point from an enforcement standpoint. Our, our staff are not set up to enforce or patrol or really regulate any activities within the cemetery.
Do we lock it and dust from dust to dust? Is that something that we can do?
Currently, we do not begin. We have in the past, there needs to be repairs made to the gates, um, and actually some gates added to the cemeteries. That is a funding issue at this point.
Let's get it in the budget and make that happen, I think. Um, so that people who are more secure and we don't have to worry about this pain, agony.
Absolutely, no. Uh, and again, upon hearing, uh, of the, of the incident in the camera, you know, being that we are in a budget season, it was fortuitous so we could make the adjustments to realistically assess and create a plan going forward to secure the cemetery.
Commissioner.
I have a request and this is to keep because of course, you know, that we are unofficially able to take any action during the public comment. I make the request that this be an agenda item at our next commission meeting so that we're able to speak more um, and actually give more direction to this matter, uh, with regards to surveillance, with regards to request that comes from staff or the needs of the cemetery to ensure the safety and security of those that rest there. And I will make that recommendation. I said it.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner.
And, um, as part of, as part of that, prior to the next meeting, if, uh, like you said, you can go ahead and get estimates on what you think it will cost for a security cameras to be placed out there, um, that'll help us, um, break it going forward to our next meeting. And, and, and again, I think we, uh, modify the policy. Also, if it's reported to, um, uh, public works, saying who, who's also over the cemetery, then that the cemetery can have a responsibility to make sure that things are passed on to our police department to make sure that that's covered in the event that the, uh, individual who reported the issue have not reported to, um, police department. So we just want to put that language in there along those lines. Thank you.
If anyone just think my call of your out, it's very beneficial. Thank you. Any further comments? Um, we have another person that wants to leave a comment regarding this topic, Stacy. Okay. Please give your name and address for the record and also three minutes, please. Say one thing important to each other.
I still have a problem with the cemetery. Amanda told me that I could place lights on my son's car, but I did that and I did that and they were removed. So I, I called, I actually called her. No, I, I went down there and I asked her, said, you told me that I could place, um, the solar lights. She said, because I don't have it, well, I had slabbed and headstone had come in yet. And she said, yes, as long as I place it on the dirt, I placed the lights on the dirt and they were still on. So I put more out there and she assured me that they weren't removed. So what is the policy on that? I think the employees tell me that I can place lights on there.
They're not permitted through your current city ordinance on cemetery.
I understand. As you refer, we want to address this issue, hold it in place in the next meeting, which we really need to go through. This is Cameron King. Our apologies.
What would you have a common thing where in Illinois? I don't know how many staff members, I mean, we hear the same thing where people are being told that you can do something um, against, impacting, um, those people's emotions. Even as a race, you know, everyone and then, um, we have to do something around you know, looking for who's verified the policy before we go and give any direction to anybody because too many times we have people, staff level, making decisions that's above their pay rate and not part of what their job is. And so we need to make sure, if you're telling somebody something, make sure you reference the policy because we're having too many times that we can't.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Vickers? Name and address and look, you have a good year. That's an honor of you.
It's an honor of you. Because you, you deserve that. You earned the right to hear it. Asking Vickers, two zero seven North Eighteenth Street. I'm here to talk about the present of the pants of the mirror of the future of Black. We have the sixth, the sixty-seven counties in this county, sixty-seven counties in the state. We're the twenty-second largest county in the state of Florida, but yet we're divorced. How did we get there? Because we got here by somebody called the Ten Wagon Dog and Tar Money. Special interest group influencing your, we make our decision. You know what's going on. This is going on right before you, you got more of it. There's a way to do things, it's not being done, it's not being done. You cannot beat yourself out of a hole in the ground. The thing is that if we stop looking outside of that front porch and turn around and you're going to see what's going inside, we found some law school that we need to do by ourselves and watching those people do what they need to do. You can't say that we need to take our property, no, they're your own. You can't advise what's in there within the building property. You can't decide right. The thing is that how we do things makes a difference. There's a, it's, it's people talking about paintings. There's a video in St. John's, I do on the road range and people were complaining about the color of it, the blue paint. People complain about everything. People complain about home culture treatment. If you don't want the right faces wrong, but people are doing this for heaven. But the thing is that how we get from the present to the present, to the future, in a better place than it's having this way there. If we still not having green colors, only eight small, big places before, but yet they have, so it's nothing. Okay, that's no time. There's so much here that we can do right. So what we have to do is, and this is, uh, I understand, you're talking about two that go deep, I really do a job, but we care for what people know it. It's a part of it. I would put this, I do your, uh, sort of thing you do it, if we do it and give them, uh.
Can you actually, we can't hear you, but you know. You gotta talk to us.
But to cut right, I'll get to you later. But there's a way to do things that we need to sit and listen and look at ourselves before we start drinking ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Once he's back.
Mr. Gaines?
How y'all doing this evening?
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Nineteen seventeen, Watts, fifteen. Um, I met the mayor the other night. Um, and I was asking him about the roads over the north side. They were looking at some repairs that had been done. And the next morning, my neighbor had an accident rather at twentieth and Watts. And I, I, I'm, I'm still kind of finding about it because you fix the road at Eighteenth Street and then Nineteenth Street and Twentieth Street. In front of my house, there's a sinkhole. Then they've repaired three times. And it's still something, it'll suck another two minutes. And I asked the gentleman right here about it the other day. He was out there, he just got down in the ditch and the hole and said, there's a whole bunch of repairs that we did. But if you did that in the holes and you in the hole and said, there's a whole bunch of repairs that we done. But if you did that in the holes and you repassed it from the inside, what's, what's going on on the outside still? It's still need to be repaired. So my question is, when is it gonna be done?
Yeah, I'll, um, just like to give you a little bit of a background on the issue at hand. Um, this is generally referred to as the North Side. Um, it is within the raised project area where we have eight one million dollars. It's slated for improvements. Um, the issue specifically at hand here is inflow and infiltration. Uh, you have stormwater pipes that have voids in the joints and in other areas. And when the water seeps in, it pulls the dirt in and that creates the sinkhole that Mr. Gaines is speaking of. Uh, in the past, that's Mr. McMillan, and, um, my assessment that, that staff probably just patched the road and did not address the root cause of the issue. Um, I do want you to know that this is prevalent citywide. Um, and stormwater is something that you currently only fund to the tune of fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, if you don't take into account staffing, it's fifty thousand dollars for capital replacement. As a comparison, because you haven't done an asset management plan on this asset, water and sewer, the recommendation is to fund in excess of three million dollars annually. So you can kind of understand how far off the mark we are collectively inadequately funding capital replacement when it comes to stormwater and roads. So, um, Mr. McMillan and his staff are working on those two areas that were identified specifically, but there are many others. Um, and he does have pictures. If you would like to look at those and get a better idea of what happened, what is going on in the problem. We did that.
I think it hurt for us to see the pictures so we don't know. I don't think it hurt for us to see the pictures and so that we can have a visual of what you're speaking on.
Absolutely. I'll forward the email to him.
And we also have numbers as well. You haven't done the full set yet, right? So, and as you say, we, we, we have this issue across, across the city. So I guess as we come across these things, we didn't even know what the assessment, the assess the issue or calls, let us know. Again, if we're only put fifty thousand to it, uh, per year, uh, then that kind of speaks a lot to why some of these things are, uh, the way they are. Due to the lack of funding, not that the city has the money to fix all this stuff, because we don't have the money to fix all this stuff, but we have to prioritize this.
And we're saying that these items, this, you know, now it's five or nine to.
Right, yes.
And that's including staff, this staff, and you just said, this is just for the fifty thousand, not including the staff, staff, or whatever.
Correct. I, I would tell you that number just to illustrate how far off we are. Counting calls of fully funding depreciating, depreciation of the asset, we call it capital outlay. Like I said, your water and sewer fund, which is another large utility, the market's three million, so there's a, there's a big difference there.
Absolutely. Okay. Yeah, but the eight million in funding that's available, not, not that I need to understand that. However, we I went out there after this accident, before it happened because I knew the intention that these roads need. Um, and what I see, my major concern mission is those roads are collapsing and there's a liability issue. And I know that we don't have money to do all of them, but I think an assessment needed to be done. We needed to go and run that on the frame because the day before, that cold is, it was standing. Next day, it caused a problem. It could have been worth it. Um, so what I'm saying at this point is let's real step on priority level and kind of like maybe evaluate already before it was going to be back.
That's why I came here.
Men, men, I don't want to get them.
The gentleman right here, go down in the hole and look and see, he see light if, if, of under the road. So then if that means that he can see light through a pipe up on the road, they, they went down that day and passed the inside of the pipe to try and stop it. So the whole, the little top.
Wait, you know, you're, if you can, let me emphasize the the need of us trying to put funding over there, to make it happen, to, to do these repairs. Um, so, um, it's imperative that we, we, we make some more allocations when we have fifty thousand that can do it. Twenty five, um, two hundred fifty thousand dollars I don't know, what we have earmarked for. So, um, I, I ask this commission to look, look and reevaluate how much we'll put on those, not just the resurfacing, those that we need to restructure.
Thank you, Mr. We have more time. Were you done, Mr. Gaines?
Oh, I've done it.
Did someone get injured, Mr. Gaines?
Yes. Mr. Leroy Jackson. He got a wrist, he got, he fractured his wrist, so that had nothing to do with it.
And just to further inform the commission, we are still actively working on the repairs, um, both internally and externally, trying to work with the weather. Starting to make compassion when we go to spend them on. Um, as we're able to, we'll continue to update you with those of the areas.
Something, something like they, they, if you, if you come one day, you can ask for a pothole or anything to repair, it may not be done that, that exact day. And so, yeah, there are opportunities for people to maybe hit these potholes and potentially damage the vehicle or otherwise themselves. So, again, I know the city is working very, very hard to address a lot of these things as it relates to infrastructure issue across the city. So, yeah, we will have some of those things, uh, come up. And so we want to do our, continue to do our very, very best and I want to thank staff for, uh, for our investigating the issues.
Anybody else? Thank you.
No, I have, you know, some of the questions that are requests for one of the commissioners. It was asked that maybe we share related to this, uh, where you stand with reserves in Better Place and also with our allocations. Uh, so I've distributed, uh, current ARPA allocation and encumbrance report. Uh, those first eleven items, um, total up to one point five million. We have not encumbered or extended anything in those categories. So, um, if you were to ask staff for a recommendation on where to look to reallocate projects such as this that we're speaking of, um, those would be, uh, the categories we would point you towards. Um, and in reference to Better Place, um, currently there stands four hundred fifty six thousand, seven hundred twelve dollars, seventy five cents. Uh, but there is an expected change order related to St. John's Avenue resurfacing that's slated before you on May eleventh, which if you approve it, would take that down to two hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. About halfway through the year, we would recommend making more allocations out of reserves to Better Place. And we're estimating somewhere between nine hundred thousand to one point one million in revenue at Better Place next year. So you'd have that available to you on October one. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Gudin? Name and address, please, for the record, and three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and all our city commissioners. Just like everyone here, just want to say thank you for your service and the time. I was requested to keep you all updated on what we do with Central Academy. On Tuesday, April eighteen, local citizens of the community that are interested in the preservation and restoration of Central Academy, we met. Um, our goal, right now, we're working towards, um, partnering with, um, local organizations and churches. Our goal is to help with a community cleanup by partnering with Keep Puffin Beautiful. And this will be organized, uh, community cleanup on the North Side. We're also working on a petition to remove and request that Central Academy be taken off the blacklist. Um, as part of the revitalization of, um, the North Side, um, our goal is to help, um, I know that we're on the blacklist, but if you look at that list, there are like twenty two properties that are listed, and most of them are located on the North Side of Black. Now, unfortunately, we have come through COVID somewhat, but when I think about it, it's almost like keeping people when they're already down. So one of my concerns, um, is of course, as I asked before, on March twenty third, I'm requesting that the city would partner with us um, as far as working towards the preservation and restoration of Central Academy. Out of all those properties that are listed on the blacklist, uh, Central Academy is, um, the one that is listed as a national registered historic place. And there are things here in our county that have actually been, um, restored, like the Bronson New Holland House um, and some other places right here. So my goal is to ask again that Central Academy be taken off the blacklist and that consideration be given to the fact that we, uh, the citizens that are concerned about the future of Central Academy are currently working towards efforts. In addition to that, I've been doing plenty of research. Uh, the sisters of St. Joseph's located in St. Augustine, they are currently renovating a building that was built back in the eighteen hundreds, located in the Black historic area called Lincolnville, St. Augustine. They are due to have their building, which was a old, I believe, an old Black school at the time, but now the goal is to become a neighborhood center. Well, they're due to be complete with their restoration in twenty twenty four. So it can be done. I even took a trip over there myself to see, uh, what they are doing, and they actually have steel beams that hold up the side of the walls. And I just have one question, looking back at the video on March ninth on pretty commission meeting. My question is, with Central Academy being listed improperly as far as the address, and it was never actually stated what the building was, and looking at the photograph, uh, most people, I don't think, would recognize that it was Central Academy. So my question to the city commissioners and to our Madam Mayor, um, were you all aware when you approved the Black, the Black program, were you approved, were you aware that Central Academy was actually listed on that blacklist on March ninth, twenty twenty three, um, at your city convention meeting when you approved it? Because I got the impression that most of you didn't even know that it was Central Academy. The picture that I saw was a back picture of the back of the building, which most people, if you look at Central Academy, if you see the front of the building, if you will recognize it once you see the picture. But when I look back at the meeting, I noticed the address was incorrect, so the address was listed incorrectly. That's my question. Can, can you all answer that? Were you or were you not aware that Central Academy was listed on the blacklist on your city commission meeting on March ninth, twenty twenty three, when it was presented to you?
Well, we have to. Commissioner Campbell?
He has, he has been up since he didn't really know.
So you, you had, you had.
Um, yes, I actually have a niece that lives directly across the street from the facility, so I see it quite frequently, the front, the back, and the side. Um, and the second thing that I want to address, um, with regards to it being listed, um, it's my understanding that all that are listed, if a citizen or whoever owns that property come forth um, to actually have the matter addressed, it is given consideration. And it's not listed to, uh, to my understanding, it's not listed to make you all get rid of it. It's listed so that we can get action. And I believe it's done exactly what it is that it's supposed to do. That's why it's listed on there, um, to, to generate a conversation, to generate what we need in order to help citizens help the group move to where they want to restore it back to its glory. So again, I, speaking for myself, it's not that we don't want to see it. You know, we, we want it on the list, and we want to make sure that what we do with one, what if we do it for one, we're gonna have to do it for all. I want to see it restored back to its glory. That was my father, my father graduated. I'm gonna say I have a niece, and my nephews play across the street from it every day. I would love to see it restored, but just because it's listed is not an indictment to where they're trying to make something a negative thing. And this program is implemented to give consideration to those. So I'm quite sure the city will do absolutely everything that we can to assist in making sure that if we have the resources, the resources are provided.
I was gonna answer a question. The question was, uh, did we know at that meeting? Uh, at a meeting, I only knew because of the vision of the meeting. Um, the ranking, one to ten, I wasn't aware, wasn't included in our ranking. Um, so me, this commission wasn't, so I did not, uh, and, but, and secondly, I did recognize that address didn't exist, so I was a little confused. I think I asked about it. And, uh, it was supposed to be corrected. So essentially, the question, I have a question. Like you say, um, we and us, if you could identify your agency or organization, because we're, I don't know about anybody else, but me, I just thought that, uh, custody of that building is unchangeable. So.
When I say we, I'm talking about just different, like alumni and people that live here in Black that are actually actively meeting and working towards, um, establishing partnerships with other organizations to come together and work towards, like I said, the cleanup that we're organizing, the petition we're organizing. Now, we're also looking to partner with the historic Central Academy Preservation and Community Development Corporation, uh, which they're actually scheduled to meet next week. They're calling a meeting, and then within thirty days, they will also be splitting offices. So once that is open to the public, then we will jump on board with that nonprofit organization. But as of right now, it's just concern citizens meeting here.
And the cleanup, the cleanup include the Central Academy?
Yes, the, the cleanup will include anyone who's interested. We will reach out to churches, also organizations like Keep Puffin Beautiful, I've already reached out to them, they're interested. So anyone who's willing to lend a helping hand in the North Side cleanup. So it's open to anyone who's actually interested. And like I said, we're establishing partnerships with other organizations, not just this, um, community group of people that's meeting. We're actually working with other organizations. So it is open to the public. What is?
The group.
The nonprofit. It will be after they have their board meeting, and then they will establish a meeting that's open to the public.
Yes, um, okay, to answer the question that I know, um, you, Central Academy, Academy was on this. No, I did not know at that time, but it being there, I, I know I had put in request to have it cleaned up or through, um, full enforcement. I know, I don't know if any other commissions have done that, but in that, along with a, a number of other properties, I think it's, it's through that we make sure that we have a gem like that in our community that has such significance. It's not really an extent that we really care and love the, the, what, what that building stood for. It means a lot. It is a national, a great one. So again, I'm here to help in every way I can to help reset that to its glory, the, the best we can. So with that being said, I mean, I think we need to keep it on the list until we can make the necessary gain. No different than any other property that has been reported. And I think that's why we have, we're having a conversation, because I, I don't think if we, if the city had not moved to implement this Black, Bright, uh, program, then would we be having this conversation? I'm not sure. So I think this generates this conversation, not to knock the building down, not to do anything, but that what can we do to respect the neighbors, the people who live in that community that has to look at a, a building that should reflect its glory. And so, um, and the other piece, if anything you can do to help, if you can just provide us maybe with a report with a task list and, uh, what you have, what you're planning on doing, and a, and a timeline. And let's work together to help get this, um, lifted back up to where it would be.
And, yeah, I was very aware, my nephew, all the things, correct, that possible.
directly across the street there, but I frequent that area every Sunday. And I actually do a lot of foot traffic in that area. I know it's just there, there's a pack Sunday walking through those apartments over there in that area, and who was living in that building. So I'm very aware of that.
And I was certainly aware, all the properties are listed on the National Historic in the city. And there is another property in the blacklist that's also on the National Historic, just for education. And have you worked with the Housing Authority? Because I see Dr. Woods there, and again, it's their property. So I've been in communication with the Housing Authority. So yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, and it's not to put Dr. Williams or the Housing Authority staff on Front Street, but I haven't heard any kind of statement with regards to, from the Housing Authority, with regards to the plans for the support of communities coming together. We can't say I'm all for it, but I haven't heard any official statement from Placa Housing Authority with their position for our particular category.
Allow me. Good evening, everyone. What I will share with you is what I shared probably most recently ten minutes before my arrival here today. And that was from a general inquiry. I received from a like a similarly interested party. From, he is not local, but he has lived here, he played an incremental part in acquiring Barker that we will be installing at Central Academy. But my response to him was specifically and pointedly, if you would allow, I will read to you what I shared. I acknowledge your seat of his correspondence, which was an inquiry, much like you just asked, right? I said, "The current state of Central Academy is dilapidated. Unfortunately, without the needed and required resources, the address capital and/or future operational expenses decided dilapidation is highly probable to persist. As you may or may not know, even to raise the structure, as any and all other relative courses of action, are cost prohibitive without a sound budget to fund initiatives. And the moral sorts, I shared with him, would be a great alternative to reducing the overall associated expenses as a whole. Rest assured, an inimical and expeditious revolution is in the best interest of all parties concerned." And to that end, I mean all points, from the Housing Authority and even one of my team members who's here, a former student of that facility. And trust me, we embrace what it means, and I personally, you know, my elders were successful in fighting for our school because my oldest sibling's school ended up being my school. But it was only this to be torn down and, you know, done away with. But I was fortunate and blessed to have that school even stand today as an elementary school. It was a junior high school when I came up. But I can't roll back the hands of time. I can't reassess all of the resources that were available then to now. And even if I did, I assure you that the dollars value today is very different than yesterday. So the reality of it is, I believe, I know for a fact that my Board of Commissioners is ingrained and committed to doing all that they can, but the reality of reality sets in. And so we get to a point where we say, okay, so we are a housing authority, right? Our initiative, our mission is to provide affordable, decent, safe housing that is in good repair. We took on the initiative of trying to gain resources to bring the school forward. Then you have to imagine, let's just say in perfect work, we were blessed to have somebody say, okay, I'll come in and fund the reconstruction and rejuvenation, full modernization of this property. Okay? After that is done, what are we going to do for operational expenses? What are we going to do to keep the license? What are we going to do to keep the lawnmower? What are we going to do to replace all of those equipments and windows and things of that nature that are sure to be in need of that rest? So we have to look at the full picture. And I believe the reality that my board is at and where we are is that a marker, you know, would be ideal. But even having raised the property is cost prohibitive because there's no budget. So you can't get blood out of the turtleneck. And you certainly can't utilize any cross-referencing of dollars that are not intended for a non-program. And I hope that answered your question.
Very much, David. Thank you.
Thank you. Finished with public comments, we have one more card, General Public Comment. And I have been pronouncing names. I'm so sorry. Because I'm a trial reading here and writing.
Gentlemen with the, Mr. Baker?
Oh, there you go. Please give your name and address for the record. I don't want this.
My name is Irene L. Mayor. I'm thirty-one, thirty-four, twenty-one St. John Avenue. I give honor to the, I'm listening to Mayor and Commission. My concern was the new park that they built behind, Brook Park. I was born and raised right here in Placa. It was a dump before I was born, back in the fifties. They used to have dogs, and it turned around and invited back there. Not early nineteen hundreds or eighteen hundreds from that dump built. And now they want to build a park to cheer. They just excavate the ground in and take up all that old dirt off the griddle company. My concern is that after years go on, the contamination of that soil, and nothing the EPA could do to stop it from coming through. Kids take that home to their parents, their grandparents, all these diseases and sicknesses that we have. I don't think it would be a good idea. And I think you should be looking into either EPA, where they get this special thing. They did the same thing in Detroit, and they want to move the auto plants out of Detroit. As long as you got, you're telling them you had to give them all that contaminated dirt and move it out. They left the plants alone. But for hell personally, you're thinking about putting children out there with baseball. I think you should be looking to a little deeper and a whole lot just abandoning it because it's wasted money. You could have put it somewhere, if mom picked it. Now, I know a lot of people grew up in Placa with it. Like the same time, that dump was sitting back there. And I know a whole lot of dead animals that are buried up under that ground because of where the dog pound was. And I was hoping that the commission could look into that and see, the EPA is supposed to put some kind of special thing and cover the ground. I don't trust the EPA. I wouldn't allow my grandkids, boy, and play no ball. They'd fill an old ball. They can't play on that dump. But when I was a kid, we used to be all, I live right two, no, I lived on H Street, Adrian Bunks, right around the corner. And I don't think it's safe for the bucket for the kids, for the family. And I'm hoping that somebody in the commission, or the whole commission, put a real good study on that before you buy, put kids out there, taking diseases home to their grandparents, their parents, and the whole house be contaminated. That's what I'm saying.
Yes, thanks for that information. Again, I've been here for thirty-one years, and I know I was, I don't think the dump was out there doing that kind of thing. But what's questioning, was there a dump there that we have? So where we had, but we had animals that were also. Oh, we, they would have anything coming, we would look in and make sure that everything was proper in this area, to make sure that the soil, you know, the soil doesn't have any, and that it is cured, like a brown, like a brown field, and make sure that it is cured where the soil, if it's a brown field area, it probably need to be maybe located.
Which I didn't respond to that. So as part of the water management, the district grant located the regional stormwater pond in that area, when they were preparing that land, they actually removed some of the old dumpsters and metal debris that was dumped there. A lot of the bricks and concrete that was dumped there over the years was leveled and capped. It was all capped with sufficient, though, per DEP standards and recommendations. And we also did groundwater and soil sampling to confirm that we did not have contaminants exceeding the EPA standards.
Well, I would like to see some of, well, you say exceeding, but there were, sound like there may have been comparisons there, and I would like to know if you say exceeding, or was it close? I mean, if there's something there, I think, you know, you might have an issue where I don't want to expose people to any examines, and I'm not a, I'm not a person, I'd like to at least see the report.
Thank you. With that being said, anybody else with public comments? Close public comments. On to the next agenda. Does anybody have something to move in?
Let's go. This, I don't need for this person, I don't have all this question.
I can eat, you can find.
I don't need and I don't have for the question.
Anyone else wanting to point to anything?
Yeah, that's right, explanation, or the need to discussion, one, O, I, O. And I'm glad to see. Make a motion that the acceptance agenda excluding I O N P, I, O, and P.
Good discussion. Okay, all in favor of any opposition? Okay. My name is Eve.
Certainly, thank you. Resolution number twenty-two, twenty-three, R. ninety-three. A resolution of the City of Placa Board declaring certain property to be surplus and directing the city manager to dispose of said surplus property in accordance with city administrative procedures and providing subscribers.
You know, that's.
That's not, it's not a copy, you're right.
It's a, it's a smaller desktop printer that was previously used for our check runs. It's obsolete. We were advised by a company that we buy our replacement parts and replacement copier from, that it didn't even have parted-out batteries. So we're just looking at getting it out of the way. It's sitting up in front of my office in the hallway right now.
Yeah, well, I'm good. I didn't see the model on there. So my only concern was that, well, any, any copiers, you know, that we is owed of, want to make sure that we keep those hard drives. So that's, that's fine, my thing is fine. But any copiers that we have, that anybody that they pop in with, to store those images on that hard drive, and that could be social security number, personal health information, and all other things. So that's not my concern. So I'm good with that. I just want to make sure that it wasn't a copy.
So, all in favor? Any opposition? Item I?
Item I, twenty-two, twenty-three, R. ninety-eight. A resolution of the City of Placa Board granting a special event permit to Brantiria Cooper for her the fifty-fourth birthday party, setting forth provisions for the permit, granting permission for amplified sound, granting permission and providing for subscribers.
If you kind of like, you need to hear it first.
Okay, when Cooper came in and filed for a special application for a birthday party, she was asking for some more, first, this is not a first-class event. It's just she's coming in, trying to do it the right way this time. She asked for several releases to be done, very difficult for the department. And we were okay with the things she asked for. The streets of the block would be Twentieth Street from Washington to Eventh Street. And then also the park would be done on her property, eight hundred and north Twentieth Street. And the amplified sound would just be using the stuff that she said, might be.
Yeah, of course, with amplified sound and the neighbors, you know, we.
Yeah, she had reached out to all the neighbors that were positive they were a resident, and everybody seemed to be okay with it.
Right, and did we post any signers or anything, maybe, of we, if we have an event, did the city put a notice out that there will be an event that, because you're closing, you're closing Eagle, you're closing Washington and Twentieth, and you're also closing North, North Twentieth, right there. Eagle and Washington, you're closing all of that on, on, no, Twentieth Street, on both sides.
Now, to my knowledge, I don't know if it sounds like you have a little picture that will be the signs out and that they're about to have an event. But we have reached out to the surrounding neighbors, and she had reached out to the neighbors, letting them know the park would be going on.
They're all good.
Yeah.
Putting a car before the horse, because we haven't even notified people. That's, that's.
She had reached out to most of the neighbors, and we have talked, we have put some signs out, but we have talked to some of the people in the neighborhood. But we have, we did let them know that, I will say that.
Yes, it's recorded.
The, the only, I'm not sure on that, but I think at least a week or two earlier before, there, I know that the park is going to be gone.
I see public notice, like a public notice, that you're notifying the people that they've been, something was going on there, and give them an opportunity to come here and voice their opinion as opposed to hearing it from staff. That's my only concern, because I think if speak to somebody, they're like, right, you know, they said that they wasn't aware of, of the event. And I do know we have a lot of issues from a number of areas that play amplified music, among other things, with traffic control, loud noise, among other things, is, I know it concerns some of the people in those areas. So that's my only concern. And you said it was supposed to be six to eight for the amplified noise, but then the permit goes from four to ten.
That I've been cleaning up.
Well, yeah, it's got different, it's got, it go three to ten, I see one, four to ten, and then I see six to eight. So, but I just want to make sure that the residents are not, their quality of life is not impacted to satisfy a personal party or whatever it may be. Any, the residents is good with it around the perimeter, I'm good. But I'm not comfortable with saying yes to this until I know that the residents are good with the amplified noise and the number of vehicles and all other things. Because I know things can get out of control. We just want to make sure that things are proper.
There is, I know time, and there is some of course, here, this is my stat. We're not, not gonna. All right? And you did say that, and I'll go by, they, they have been playing all the time. It seems to be okay. You said you want to hear from one.
You're the first one. Not that, if the people doesn't know that, I guarantee they don't look at our agenda. I'm not. I'm just saying from my. I'm just saying from my perspective, you know, I want to make sure that there's quality of life for people who are having to hear and listen to that, and I do know. There are elderly residents who live in that area and I'm giving them my concern, so that's what, that's my position.
And you said, but she had already done. Policy follows, you say they're ready for policy there. The signs have to be posted.
I think it's about, about things out, so you can make sure that it's notified, uh but uh. And in the future, I would definitely make sure that any event of this nature will be noticed and also reach out to the committees. Uh I'm not. Definitely I do apologize for that. That's what wanted. And think about, I'm not getting much in the, in the pre and special then. Team in dress, uh some type of note about the committee around the conversation that we have to do and also the conversation he says we have.
Say, um. If we can, just to give peace, um trying to get those signs out is.
That would be awesome tomorrow.
But I must commend the citizen community in trying to do this.
And I would definitely get some of those signs out, so I'll be looking at that tomorrow.
Cause if, if they go at least a week.
But this is something that we're, we're voting on, so is it a conditional? Is it a conditional vote? Because we're holding on it too tight to say yes or no to something that we are. Looking for, looking to make sure that things are going to be a compliance. How will we know?
It can be conditional.
Well, it, it wasn't the applicant's fault. It's not that concerned, but yeah, so. It's not enough for us to say no because they, like. Mission camera said they did, they did that.
Right, right, right.
And, and I would definitely follow that, so I didn't make sure I get the sign out to everybody and notify them.
Right, I know. And I, and I appreciate, I appreciate that, that we, um, even if only anybody's knowing, we want to make sure. Yeah. That the quality of life does not go down for those people living in there. That don't have a voice.
So I, I will. I put in a motion that we'll forward this to the, to the body condition.
Can we, can I see clarity? Being that there is already a resolution, do we have to deny that resolution? And then come up with the, the initial change or can we do that?
If, but may I speak, ma'am?
You, I don't care. I'll let him miss Charles.
Um yes, you can deny this one or you can amend it, um you know, however you'd like to. To whatever section they have to run within and add that amendment and then move that um as a ritual.
So I'm able to add that the signs are put out. The back of the study, let me see what's saying. Just the minute to add that it's put out. On tomorrow, maybe. Makes one.
Your motion.
I say it.
All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you. Um O.
Let's say move and move, uh meeting board. I'd say O and P has written. But you don't really know my name. Without any, any permission or, or discussion. Without further ado.
So you don't, you don't need to speak.
So you gotta stop him.
Second.
All right, we accept O and P as they are presented.
Second. All in favor? I, any acquisitions? Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am mayor, I would like to acknowledge Ms. Danielle Brown, who's in the audience, we just passed. She had pretty employees, which is a girls institute that is dedicated to girls from ten to thirteen. I just would like to acknowledge her in the event, this is their nod request, I believe, of young ladies from our community that they take out the time. And who help develop and speak like these things like, so I would definitely want to recognize her being here tonight.
Thank you. Onto your readiness. If you have your directions, surplus, you're talking over price opinion.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Um. See here, there's a list of five properties uh that staff is bringing back for you. This, these properties were previously on. Um these surplus property lists and last time you put a batch properties out, you held these back uh for future consideration. Um these are the high and low broker's price opinion on each of these properties. Um if you so like, we also have the DPOs for these with aerial graphics, if you're not familiar with, with those intersection descriptions. Um the recommendation is uh to get authorization uh to list these on MLS and see if we have the papers.
Is any good information?
Right, not watching. Been a lead on for PHA. Um and, and that is, we see, we hear, but will we give any special consideration? For um to that agency at our, at our, we talked about moving forward to look uh affordable and work for housing. Uh maybe we could form partnership. Um some kind of collaboration uh with them. Company as an investor and building on property, exactly. What the, what commission think about it?
That, I think we can maybe they do this special consideration.
So you could partner with the PHA as an entity um. Uh to put in affordable or attainable housing. Um staff is just following previous direction, taking properties off the surplus because bringing them forward for listing on MLS. Alternatively, the PHA could submit a proposal uh to staff uh which could be accepted contingent on commission approval.
Um.
Win and win.
Win, win. But Donald, do you want to speak to that?
Uh from now on, the state is. Uh our liaison already have a liposynthetic public, at least of sorts, maybe not in, but the code is bad. Well, you know, he taught me at the time when I was um. Had a different meeting, right? We. Uh essentially, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm always uh each time that I approach our liaison, I can, the housing authority and oftentimes. Find in this cap, the assistant city manager, he finds himself holding both of his copies and turning them back to. To the wall, because he thinking, I'm coming to the syrup more. And I am. And at the end of the day, uh whatever we can get. We can get, uh but we are authorized to go up to the highest assessed value, okay? That is, of course, the last open, continued upon the nature of any agreement that we can craft, but that's just. Joining the, the learning fair to share with you some of the possibilities that we can do. And what I did was some of the information that uh Donald was nice and kind enough to share with me with regard to available properties. That was out on the surplus way back when. I had our architect go in and just give me a few renderings as to what we could possibly do. Uh in that area of space, and so what you have before you there are just, just that, just ideas. And uh you know, different types of bills for different areas and so on and so forth. But yes, I know we've been speaking in tandem in that length throughout the years. Uh here and there intermittently, uh several businesses throughout the years, you know, from commissioner Borum. And as you well know, we work uh closely with Commissioner Jones of the ATO. Uh but it is a growing need. Uh whether we are awake into it or not, whether we realize it or not, whether we're cognizant of it. Homelessness is growing. Uh there are people finding themselves on our waiting list who never thought they'd be there. I'm talking about professional people, okay? Uh so we have a waiting list in excess of, combined with this in excess of nine hundred applicants. And we have two major programs, and that is, of course. Our affordable housing, which is property that we own and manage, and then our sister housing, which is by way of third party, the voucher program. So um any and all property that you have. But honestly, quite frankly, we want, we need, and we can utilize in the ways and means to leverage. Uh right now, because the market is waning. Uh some five years ago, nearly five years ago, when I stood before you. I was a much more optimistic man. Because I knew that our nation's fiscal environment was differing. But now that has waned greatly, and I think we all can attest to that. So uh we have to change the ways and means in which we go about doing the business. And one thing I want to assure you all, and that is all of your constituents. Uh will still be protected. There's, you know, and, and I'm not going to say that there is not. An, an ease and, and you know, sensible thought of gentrification that has happened all around us. It's real, it's happened, you've all seen it. But that is not our agency's intent, that is not our intent to displace anyone. And one of the reasons that we have not been able to do any significant colonization effort is because we don't have any other affordable housing that temporarily relocate people to. So that's when you would hear me constantly talking about the sixty-two Faircops units, sixty-two Faircops units, right? Because at least there were sixty-two fewer units. That are some nine hundred applicants and to wait over. Right? So that's where we are. But yes, partnership is, our partnership is ingrained within our cooperative agreement. So I'm like, it'll love it, we married, okay, we're married. And we plan on being a good husband and a good wife, or what, what's another you need? All right. Any questions? For me?
No, I just want to thank you. Looking for this partnership, you know, me and um. Myself and my commission Jones, uh. I'm in full agreement with the uh partnership to make sure that we do have. Lots that come available that um Black House Authority get them first deals. At them and um so that they can continue to. Continue that partnership we have when we have, Mr. Nelson, when we have. Two um constructions that went in on South Thirteenth Street. Um maybe you might not know about that, the partnership that the city had with um. Mr. Nelson, when he came in and um some of us wasn't on board, some weren't, but again, uh I do value that and uh. Look forward to the partnership.
And we do, and that is the agency's plan, the A E plan is to increase and maximize visibility. Promote family housing, which right now are those outstanding sixty-two Faircops units. However, we are committed to financial literacy for our residents and those who are willing, able and desire to become homeowners. We want to expand upon our homeownership program.
So it would be the ideal for these two companies to create a partnership that is individuals that will be able to have their own home. Beyond the tax rules, I feel like.
And it, it, again, what we had back in um twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen, now very. When we made that partnership, uh there was a lot of, we call our plaque before allowing that, but everything worked out for them for the good and um. Those two units, you know, looked very good in the community when we were getting a lot of pushback on.
Well, that, which is good, we plan to do that. Yes, I. Thank you.
Thank you. Um would you have some comments on this particular agenda item, this roach? Name and address and.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Roach, street one thousand street. And I'm here to address the property on the corner of Kirby and Morris. Uh that is my neighborhood. I walk past it regularly going to another historic gem, Westview Cemetery. I implore the mayor and commissioners to look past dollar signs and see the potential of what that corner of the city could be in the future. Will not get into the water source situation. Or the environmental impact that possibly filling and developing that meant to do to our town. Even though I know in my gut it would be devastating to remodel. That area of tract housing. What I care about is looking forward to what the beauty of restoring that ravine would be. Without breaking the bank. And it would be an appearance on a huge fair fair that is a highly travel. Selling that plot would not bring in that much revenue to rationalize the destruction of a natural resource. Which is what that property is. And it could enhance our city for all. It's worth much more than uh the maximum twenty thousand. Basel. And I do think there is other property that um could be utilized in the city to um. Provide housing for reviews. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was that last? I didn't hear the last one. To provide.
Housing authority needs.
But I think it's safe, we didn't make that combination as yet, so that statement was already approved.
Um well, I'm not privy to what's in front of you, um and it's not on the screen, but it is obviously on the, the list potential um.
It's on the list for discussion and directions. However, we have not given directions to uh, you've heard comments. From uh some of the commissioners in favor of, but you hadn't heard from all of us.
Okay, and, and I'm, I'm simply just making a comment, so.
Absolutely, thank you, just wanted to mention.
Would you like to? You can look.
Oh, sure, I'll be looking. Alex, give it to him, give me right back.
Keep sharing with me.
The League of the Ditches, fifty-seven thousand, fourth floor, Black and Door. Uh my uh comments are about the Kirby Street and Morris Street property also. First of all, this is not, is our, it's our free zoning, it can be wealthy family, but this is not a building of a lot under our free zoning. It's fifty by one hundred feet. Under our free zoning, you must have a sixty-foot frontage and six thousand square feet according to the zoning code. Even with wealthy family, it doesn't get any more warrant, it's in the building of a lot. Uh perhaps a hood could be put on there, but the issue is this. The city need to keep that lot to preserve the integrity of the ravine that Osceola Creek flows through. Osceola Creek brings three hundred and ninety-nine acres of hill area of Palat to all around Hank Ryan Park. It drains down through the underpass, it comes under the, under the Creel Avenue, it comes up behind the Lions Club, uh it's the uh Fur Hodge Post, behind the Lions Club. It flows through that ravine, behind this lot, behind the Lions Club, goes under Kirby Street, under the ravine, under the old Florida Ranch property. Comes up by the listational River Street and empties out the forty-five acres of Wilson Cypress. If something is done and, and if something is done with this lot, then would somehow or the other. Stop the flow of Osceola Creek, you're going to flood the whole hill area of Hank Ryan Park. All that area, not the park, but all that area around there, you're going to flood the underpass, you're going to flood down past Mr. Beaton's house on Creel Avenue. And then when it's there, when the river's blocked, when the creek is blocked, when the river rises, then you're going to flood River Street in the South Historic District. I think the city needs to keep this particular piece of surplus property. As a way to protect the integrity of the flow of Osceola Creek. The other lots, I don't care what you do with them. Partly, partly housing, and that's probably a good idea, but this is a different, a different situation. It's come up three or four times, and each time I've gotten spoken on this point, so I think the city needs to retain this. Definitely to retain the integrity of Osceola Creek. We'll do that for me. If that ravine gets blocked, Osceola Creek gets blocked, and you had a major problem. One brief thing uh about Black Housing Authority, they said they had nine hundred folks were waiting lists for houses. Uh the discussion came up several years, but I think Mr. Bormer just got on the commission, he threatened not wrong. And they said they had nine hundred people waiting, and the question was, how many of those people are local from Palat or Putnam County? And the answer was no, they're all about the county. But I, so that any problem you talk partners on, Black Housing Authority, as long as they're building housing for local citizens. Thank you, and but please preserve this law in terms of Kirby, very important for the environment, thank you.
Um yes, that point one two. Um lotsized corner of Kirby Street and Morris. That's what you were talking about?
Yes, that's what you, yes.
All right.
Yes, it's, it's um one, two acres.
Yeah.
And by the way, the property appraisal has been assessed at nine thousand, and I do understand uh sales prices and stuff, and. The, our realtor is listing it for a lower twelve thousand or higher nineteen thousand, depending on how long it's on the market. But it's not a buildable lot, so they have, I don't think you're going to vary students to build on that small of a lot, but this is something you all need to keep. And you have property around it that you'll keep it to preserve the flow of Osceola Creek, please, thank you.
I think that was, commissioner, I have to have a prepared question. It's me, sorry. I need the question. Obviously, really is okay for us to partner with. For like a housing authority. North Eleventh Street, north uh, the southwest corner of North Eleven, northwest corner of North and Eleven. Out in Edgemore, Hudson. And they can have that, right?
Yeah, I have no problem. Oh, that, those aren't the scores. I know they're like environmentally expensive, but I'm concerned about Osceola Creek.
Yeah, I might just want to clarify.
Yeah, this is the one down, down, like a Jackson Cemetery, my nine, five, five, and four, um, yeah, this is the one. I mean, not for the number, but this, this is probably a bloody issue.
Yeah.
Major issue.
Commissioner Campbell, did you go and say something? Commissioner Campbell?
You want to clarify that?
Okay. Okay, so, um, I, that will give the direction on the whole process that we need to, uh, direction. I said we're, we're together to provide direction, that, and how we want to move forward with these properties.
I, I spoke with, with, um, Commissioner, with you before, and she, she brought up a good concern about the flow, the water flow, and how it, uh, from that area, um, with that point one-two acres. Now, what we need to speak to as it relates to that to make sure that, you know, it's very, or whatever it may be, as it relates to that, to make sure that we're not doing anything, um, detrimental to like, um, other things, so can we, can we kind of maybe pull whatever till we get further understanding of water flow and.
So, so Commissioner Broden, is, uh, Ms. Kittens speaking as a subject, not an expert on that, or just, I mean, what did she get that from? Obviously, asking questions, um, speech around that we're not using, and.
Well, I, I, I understand that, but.
I think yes, she has had a quality.
I always have, I always spread, I always spread her lying.
Do you need to just kind of clarify this aspect from the base?
I think it was said, Ms. Kittens.
I'll address Mr. Jones after the meeting. I have plenty of experience about that.
Okay, yeah, you can have the discussion later.
Certified.
Commissioner Campbell, we want to get to that. Yeah, I have a question. Commissioner Campbell?
I'd say, um, my point is that we report with the recommendation that has come before with some of the commissioners in regards to, because moves to say, uh, how, uh, Polack Housing, and they really want the lottery. So. I'm not. I have the option to speak at some of them. I say that we allow them the opportunity to proceed with any of the options that are listed. Um, giving them the first dibs, not exclusively, because again, we don't know if they want any or all.
Commissioner Castle? Oh, I, I don't feel the difference, but he hit the nail on the head.
What?
Kind of.
You're waiting to.
I think we were on the partnership part with Polack Housing Authority in developing partnerships with them.
I'm not trying to block Polack Housing Authority at all, but I'm just wanting to do, I have a concern that has brought to me before. As it relates to the water flow from that particular area. They can have all those lots. I'm working with Polack Housing Authority. There's no way I'm here blocking anything of Polack Housing Authority or anybody else. My only concern was to talk about the water flow in that plane. That's it.
So I think I'm going to just to call that, I'm going to get more facts about that when we get in practice, that we have, so.
Please put that on the record.
Yes. So that my question being, if you said that we're going to go with the partnership, do we want a table, or do we, do we want to allow them to get dibs and see where they want to go, the direction they want to go in? Do we want to pull the, the Kirby and Morris? I need to know, I mean, any, any clear, uh, clear direction to give them?
I, whatever, whatever works best. All I know, I've talked to, uh, former commissioner, um, Kittens before, way prior to this, well, a year, year and a half ago, we talked about that very thing about how that water flows from that very area that she's speaking about and the issues that come up. So that's my only concern.
I was trying to, Mr. Griffin.
If, if the staff recommended to sell it, let's get rid of it, but at the same time, if there's an environmental concern, a stormwater concern, I don't like it. At least look at, and see if this, if we can do something with it.
Is that Mr. Griffin?
This, this may help the commission. Um, staff bringing forward a previously approved surplus list for your discussion and recommendation on putting on MLS to entertain offers. Speaking in reference to the stormwater and drainage through that entire parcel, not the subject parcel here, the point one-two acres, developing this would not impede water flow. However, keeping that entire property together may have more value to the community because it is a passive, open space. So, it's not staff's recommendation that you should sell it. We're just simply bringing forward a previous list to keep the conversation going. In reference to the P H A, it's our opinion that you still may have to solicit other responses from the public, and you could not just grant it to them. You may want to entertain a workshop.
Right. I want to be clarified, because I heard getting dibs came out. I said we partner with them in these efforts. Not to give a dibs, because Mr. Woods came up and clearly said that they could go up to the value. They can, and they was taught to, uh, clarify that. I did not say give them a discount or anything on that nature. However, have partnered with them with consideration of the lots where they can be buildable and help with affordable and workforce housing. So.
Mr. Mr. Ms. McCastle? Was that not my original question when we first brought it up?
No, I, but I didn't say give them dibs.
Okay, so I think, Commissioner McCastle? I'm done. Okay. I think this would get, um, what you're ready to do, do one and a half video chat and an animation.
That sounds like, uh, for a simple fit, man, like you referenced saying, it has already been previously approved list. So we already said that we want to put it out. He's asking how to put it out, and that's what he said. And so are we going to back it up, or are we going to go forward? I think that's the question.
I think you recommended that we workshop it, so I'm hoping that we workshop it.
We can't make a decision. I, I say go forward with the deal. That's me. I make a motion that we go forward with MLS, but probably going to get a second. I believe you're moving forward. I got a second.
Well, there's the motion on.
We're going to, we're going to, I'm connecting you. Which, which one is this?
We have two motions on the floor. That's our problem.
What was the first? We don't have two motions. We have.
I'll have one motion.
That's what we know.
No, no, I did not. There is one motion on the floor that needs to be addressed. Your motion is not on the floor, because we still have a motion on the floor.
What's the move?
Workshop. Commissioner McCastle, we'll get the motion first. That's what I'm saying. So we have a motion on the floor, workshop, and we have a second.
Second. Sorry, I'm sorry to say.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Question, can we get a question?
Question? We already went through.
Well, the question was, we were, given direction on, special direction on this.
But we were doing, we're, we're, now we're looking for a workshop, Mr. Spelling.
Can I ask the commissioner if you intend to workshop it with the P H A?
That would be great. We want to.
Want to.
This time here, this time. Workshop. Along with.
Second.
Okay, at this point, you're saying, uh, the polarity of our partnership with the housing agency, but I don't know exactly what that entails. In order to, could, when I'm playing a workshop, I would, if, if that is, you know, if you work together.
There's going to be, there's going to be. Emily, but, but they, they can be present.
I'll definitely say this, without a workshop, whoever wants to attend, can attend, so we don't get anything in the vision.
That's what I thought.
So is that your?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
Commissioner, do you say a name again?
I said aye.
Fine, okay. So we're going to follow the workshop.
The one-two, could you say it?
I did. I did. Item H?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution number twenty-three R ninety-six, a resolution of the City of Polacka, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute and test a handsome professional services scope and fee agreement in the amount of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars and eighteen cents for the design permitting and bidding for the C D G M I T R O four-two project and providing for scrivener's.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Number nine?
Sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for recording the, the vote. Resolution number twenty-three R fifty-six, a resolution of the City of Polacka setting forth provisions for the hometown hero and unsung hero awards and providing for scrivener's.
So.
All in favor? Aye. Any other question? Or which question?
Well, uh, some of the names I read on there, and they're related to, um, Putnam, I think it was the one where, you know, that he said about Putnam County, I did a review. I've been here for thirty-one years, spend more time here than I have in my hometown where I grew up at. So, all I know is Polack. And so that would exclude, and it may exclude others as well who have made significant contributions to this community. Not only that you only have to be from Putnam County, and to make significant contributions, I think we need to make sure that, you know, if you make contribution to this community, you can also reconsider that my friendly, um, modification.
I, I may have misunderstood. I thought that was just an example of what school district was doing when it said Polack County.
Yeah, it was in the page.
It wasn't what we're adapting.
I understand.
Anybody, anybody's eligible.
Right.
But you would be eligible.
Yeah, right. I just saw it in there. I just wanted to make sure that we were all of this group, this group. All right. That's, that's why we have for this.
You're all in favor?
Aye.
Then I have an objection. I'm sorry, I'm.
Um, famous notice in Exhibit A, um, the procedures, um, for the one for the hometown hero award. Um, item number seven says the mayor shall select, but in the unsung hero award, there is no decision made indicated as to who will make the vote.
Because, uh, I understand, didn't we all have any choice in the last, in the last song?
I probably did. The mayor asked, the woman made the mayor, and then.
Everybody submitted or selected the person.
Right, every commissioner.
Each commissioner is able to say what they.
We just want that.
We support her.
Yes.
So five.
Right, because, yeah.
Yes.
So, should it read, the mayor and each commissioner also letting individual from the list of nominations and may award one per year at any time of the year?
No, ma'am, may select not shall, because if we, we, we might not select anybody, so we just put may, may in there, that'll kind of give a notion of a matter to.
But we need a motion to. Yeah.
Motion to leave him.
To say may?
And if it's A, two, it's going to be may, just write out the term shall.
Right.
Is it, are we looking at seven?
I, I could read it to you.
Go ahead and read it.
That would say, you say.
You are not saying. Okay, yeah, so we would add, um, an item under procedures for the unsung hero award that would say, uh, the commissioners may select one, one individual from the nomination list and may award one per commissioner at any time.
So. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. On to public hearings. Please, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance number twenty-three thirteen, an ordinance of the City of Polacka, Florida, providing the future land use map of adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, which is greater than fifty acres in size from City of Polacka Industrial I M D, Residential O R L, and Commercial Comm. To the City of Polacka Recreation, rec for the following property, one-two-one Crystal Cove Road, Polack, Florida, three-two-one-seven-seven. Polacka Stanwell Suburban Farms Map Book Two, page thirty-nine, law eleven, Official Records Book five-four-eight, page one-three-eight-seven, plus the ordinance for city annexation of official records, book five-five-nine, page one-zero-seven-three, Official Records five-eight-six, page one-one-eight-nine, subject to the Eastman Map Sheet thirty-seven E, parcel number thirty-seven oh-nine twenty-six four-zero zero zero six zero zero one-one-zero, digits to the boundaries of the Polacka, providing for scrivener's, provided for an effective date.
So.
Second.
Ms. Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this is, as noted, a large-scale land amendment, and we're revising the land use and the zoning, um, from the net real residential, commercial, to recreational, for the land use, and of course, the zoning from, um, two-one-oh. Anyway, you guys, you already know what it is, but it's, it's proposed to be a luxury arguing resort. One hundred and seventy-seven acres, about fifty acres of that is developable. The rest of it will remain in conservation when passed a recreational facility. I just want to give you a brief, that brief description, because the applicant is here to make a representation. Okay?
Good.
Um, with the applicant lunch come up? With this one mission name and address.
Good evening. I'm a record Kathy Ebo, American. And I am a member of the Americans to Certified Planners. And. So, can you go ahead and give a? Okay, good evening. Um, my name is Kathy Ebo, I S C P, and I am, um, the agent for M three development. Quick summary of this, of what we're going to talk about today. We're going to go through the project, we're going to go through the development plan. Going to focus on some development features, and review concurrency, um, planning consistency, and that we have some findings from the neighborhood workshop that we had in February. As Ms. Walsh mentioned, we are asking for a large-scale comprehensive land amendment from residential, commercial, and industrial. The site currently has all three land use categories to one recreational. Recreational is required, um, in order for a campground use to be used. The zoning is a, going from, again, recreational, commercial, and M one, which is a residential zone, to the R O S P U D. This is a requirement of your comprehensive plan that if you ask for the recreational open space, it must be done through the P U D process. So the P U D, um, is an overlay on top of the recreational open space. Recreational open space allows for and establishes the allowable use. And then the P U D on top of it establishes the standards by which the use can be applied. This is a four hundred site R V and five fifty site rustic site, so a total of four hundred and fifty total sites. Um, we have, are, we're using the established setbacks from the code. The available area is forty-eight acres, about twenty-eight percent of the site. We have fifty thousand square foot of maximum of structures, which would be welcome center, the, um, convenience store, recreational facilities, a clubhouse, bathhouse, those types of facilities. Um, the pink area indicates where the structure sites would be located, the kind of blue hexagon identifies where the R V resort section would be. The orange component is where your rustic campground will be, and you can see, um, over seventy percent of the site is going to be preserved in conservation lands. There'll be allowed, we're in a three different maximum sites for the R Vs that will be shown on the site plan in more detail. Um, the rustic site, the most important thing about this is that you will not, we will not allow for um, direct access through cars. There will be parking in a common parking lot and being, um, shuttled or walking into their official sites, and then we have transportation and recreational facilities. The type of use is allowed on this P U D as the R V, rest, campground, amenity buildings, as talked about earlier, the roadway and conservation areas. The utilities, potable water, wastewater will be public and will be on site. Stormwater will be located on site as well, electric. Um, we will meet the sign, the, the lighting and sun. We will meet the sign, the the lighting and signage standard that per your land development code. Since the original, the planning commission meeting, which we received unanimous support and recommendation for approval, there were some issues that were asked to be addressed by both staff and by the planning commission, and so we have added additional standards in your, in the copy of the B U D that you have in front of you, you see those and strike through underline. The additional standards that we are added address the code requirements for the park models, this is to ensure that those park models are maintained long-term. And you can apply the standards either at time of reconstruction or construction. In transportation, we have established a standard that will minimize stacking past the train lane. There is about four-hundred, a little over four-hundred square, or four-hundred feet of stacking that goes from the train to the to the roadway, which is quite a bit of stacking area, but we have, we've established some stacking procedures, we are also going to ensure that there is stacking on-site so that ideally people will not have to be be stacking off of the site except at the time of a of a train passing. We also had added design standards for our many features. They are to be in an old Florida vernacular as shown in pictures, which are from our additional development code P U D standards. They will be evaluated at the time of site plan review. We've added design standards for conservation lands, native vegetation and trees, in order to ensure that this site, which is heavily forested, maintains a heavily so forested for the future. The minimum conservation lands is seventy-eight percent of the property, as you can see from the P U D master plan, we have about seventy-one percent, so we are over our minimum. We can use passive recreation facilities inside the conservation areas, so long as they meet D E P and Army Corps of Engineer standards. The native vegetation, we are required to remove invasive species in the buildable areas, and we are to maintain as much of the native vegetation through the construction of this project as possible. In terms of trees, our can, we need to maintain any tree canopies over eight, over eight and on the understory over four. Utilities, we recognize and have talked to city staff about some of the utility concerns in this project, we will be evaluating those more in detail as we get into the site plan and any improvements that are needed, either on-site or off-site, that directly relate to the improvements that we are doing on in the campground, we will have to address and work with the city to upgrade if necessary. Terms of the operations of the facility to make sure that long-term, the facility is what we intend it to be when we construct it. We've established that through code enforcement, the code enforcement has the authority to make sure, maintain and monitor any activities that happen on this site in terms of facility management, in terms of individual units, so it's not only our facility as a whole, but of the individual units of the R Vs that are, that come onto the site. And then in length of occupancy, we will be requiring a no more than a hundred and eighty-day for twelve-month period occupancy, so people can't stay more than six months. And we, as per Florida statute, will be maintaining guest registry that can be evaluated anytime by code enforcement. So those are the additional steps that we have added as part of the trying to address the concerns that were raised by the planning commission and by staff after the planning commission meeting. Going back into what we had already established, the camp, the project features, again, this is a campsite with campground amenity and campground recreation. The pictures that you see here are the pictures that we have used for the design, preliminary design work, they are in that old Florida vernacular that we are established as a design standard. But this is, this is really meant as, as Miss Walsh said, a luxury R V resort, this is meant for something that is going to be an outstanding contribution to the tourism and livability of the community. Some of the standard, we've, we've done our homework, we have, we are not new to the R V world, we do have other projects going on in the state of Florida. And one of the things that we have found is, this isn't something that is just for the visitor, somebody from somewhere else, somebody from out of state, the snowbird, or something. A lot of these R V resorts are used by those of us who live in the area and want a great place to get away for a weekend or a week on vacation. So this isn't just for the visiting public, it's really for those of us who live in the area. Again, conservation is really important for us on this property, it's the reason that the project is being developed on the site is because of its natural landscaping and and it's really kind of a unique site for an R V resort, a lot of R V resorts tend to be more open. And this one is more in line with what you would expect from a natural park type of facility. We need all concurrency standards, one of the questions that was raised during the planning commission meeting was the roadway trip generation. Our trip, our our traffic study, our T I S study indicates that we'll have a maximum one-hundred-and-twenty-three peak trips per day, peak trips is the morning trips and the evening trips. Campgrounds, unlike a lot of the transportation studies, they they, there are only studies done for the peak and and the peak times of the day, and then according to the I T E trip manual, which is the kind of the bible for determining maximum trips per day for concurrency. And again, as talked about earlier, we need planning consistency of your future land use, your land development code, your conservation element, your recreation space settlement. So we have, we need all your standards of both your comprehensive plan and your land development regulations zoning code. And we did have a neighborhood workshop, about thirty to forty people attended the workshop, it was held February ninth on on an additional property that is owned by the applicant. Some of the issues that came up were regarding the construction of the development, regarding the operations of the development and off-site impacts, the same types of issues came up at the planning commission and have been brought up by staff. We have worked really hard since the very beginning with your staff at all levels to address these concerns. We have made multiple revisions to our P U D plan to ensure that to the best of our ability, we have addressed all the concerns and we were really excited to say that because of that, we have had very little complaints since the initial meetings from the public, I've had a couple of phone calls. Initially, when I went to planning commission, I had no phone calls since it went to, was posted for city council, so we are very excited about that and indicates to us that we have the support of the community and that we've addressed fully their concerns. And based on, based on our compliance with your future land use and other comprehensive plan standards and your land development code regulations, we ask for approval for both your large-scale or large-scale comprehensive planning amendment and approval of the rezoning application, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
I've got a question then that relates to, you said that city code enforcement was to have jurisdiction coming in.
Yeah.
I guess, I know for a fact, I think with the number of days or whatever that your staffing was up to, was it fourteen max for the fourteen?
They have a maximum of one hundred and eighty, or six month period, six months and twelve and twelve consecutive months.
Right, but has this one thing changed with the fourteen day inconsistent day, therefore, when we talked initially when we had this R V thing before, only a few years ago, we talked about the fourteen day maximum with R V.
So I believe that's a P U D for an adjacent parcel, and it is not the same P U D that we are presenting this evening, this P U D that we are presenting today, we are requesting a maximum of one hundred and eighty days, which is six months, very involved consecutive period. So there, that standard is still applicable to the P U D for that property, but this is a different P U D with different standards for this property, they are not the same.
That's actually kind of confusing with both of the R V parts. So we want to do something different for this particular one because of what differently, what rules?
So because your, in your land development code requires a P U D to be used as an overlay district to the recreation overs, open space underlying zoning category. And every time you do a P U D, whether it's for a campground, whether it's for a mixed-use project or residential project, commercial project, any P U D, it may be the same type of use as another P U D that you have in the city of Polacka, but that doesn't mean they have the same standards, every P U D is unique to itself, and in this case, in these standards, what we are asking for, the one hundred and eighty maximum day stay or six month during a twelve-month period. The two-week period that is of the P U D for the adjacent property of the smaller site is still, is still accurate, so the, that one still has your maximum of fourteen days. This is a different allocation, a different P U D with different standards. There are a lot, a lot of the standards that are in this P U D are not the same as the P U D for the other property. The reason that, so what a P U D allows for is a P U D is designed to allow for site-specific land development standards. So you use a P U D to address specific site, site constraints or site-related issues to that property. Unlike a conventional or a standard zoning, which the same code would apply to any code that has that standard, P U D is different.
The overall difference between the two, they're both R V parts, and I understand what you're saying about the. I just wanted to see what the differences were.
Well, I mean, the reason that we are asking for something different than that property is because if this is meant to be something that snowbirds would be attracted to, this is meant to be something that would be not a transitional or something that's turning over, if you, a two-week stay maximum has a lot of turnover, it has a lot of people coming in and out, what we're denying this resort for is people who would want to come and stay for that maximum of six months.
I would have been that city, like, so one hundred and eighty days versus fourteen, what, pros and cons?
So one rover. You want to pop, give your name and address.
Matt, one twenty-one Crystal Cove Drive. So just for the clarification, I think on the E U D for the eleven acres, the neighbors at the time were concerned about it becoming like a long-term stay, it would, it would impact their subdivision because it's so close to their property. Since the neighborhood meetings, unfortunately, they're not here tonight, we have four or five people in that subdivision who are very much in favor of it, and for several different reasons, they couldn't make it tonight, but this property is on the other side of of Crystal Cove Drive and Copper Road, and there's no residential around it, it basically is the railroad, the river, and and so there would be no negative impact long-term, and really, to to have a successful R V resort, which is what we're doing, it it lives off of snowbird travelers, and and that is the primary marketplace, and you you can't really build an R V resort and say to someone in Florida, you know, you're coming down from Canada and you can only stay for two weeks. So, so that's why, and I, and I think the two weeks specifically was because the neighbors were really concerned, you know, with, if they're, the eleven acres of bucks, the subdivision. Yeah.
Then what, if you don't have aerial view or something, show where exactly. You just lost me, I thought it was the area when you first come in, Crystal Cove, so it's not there.
Right, so, so do the one that has the the conservation lands on it as well?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so up where that the amenity building thing is on that other side of Crystal Cove Drive is the eleven acres. And then the housing subdivision would be up above that, so this is on, this is on the south side. And as, as you, as you come in on. On, yeah, it's on the right-hand side, so, exactly.
The R L, the R L is.
Yeah, so, so up there, the the white R L kind of upside-down L at the very top, that's the eleven acres.
I'm sorry, I tried to zoom into it and I moved it, sorry.
That's right. So that, that, that piece up on top is the eleven acres, and then the property that we're talking about is down here. And then you can kind of see.
Again, there we go.
That's okay. You can kind of see, this is all wetlands here, and where you see this sort of dark outline, there's about fifty acres left. We're going to be putting the conservation easement on all of the riverfront and that one hundred and twenty acres, and then just the uplands over on this side is where we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. There are any questions, if you have any questions? Okay, I'm going to open up a comment, is anybody here for public comment? Name now or vote for public comment?
I just wanted to remind Madam Mayor, when we take a vote, because the planning board, you need a super majority, which means four commissioners will have to vote.
So you said the planning commission approved.
Commissioner Kenny McCastle. Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Will Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Rufus Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Anna Crisp.
Yeah.
My friend, Tom Anderson.
Okay. Second one, this is. So you just approved the ordinance for land use change, is that correct? Do we also have to give a motion to transmit it? And then the motion for the zoning part? So we're voting.
So we're voting to transmit it.
All in favor? Any, any opposition? Thank you.
Moving on to ordinance number twenty twenty-three fourteen, an ordinance of the city of Polacka, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the city of Polacka, Florida be amended for the city of Polacka, industrial light M one, central commercial C three and multiple family R three to the city of Polacka Plan Unit Development Recreation Open Space P U D R O S for the following property, one-two-one Crystal Cove, Polack Road, Polack, Florida, three-two-one-seven-seven, Polack and Stanwall Suburban Farms, Map Book Two, page thirty-nine, lot eleven, official records book five-four-eight, page thirteen-eighty-seven, plus the ordinance for city annexation official records book five-five-nine, page ten-seventy-three, official records book five-eighty-six, page eleven-eighty-nine, subject to the eastment map sheet thirty-seven E, parcel number thirty-seven oh-nine twenty-six four-zero zero zero six zero zero one-one-zero, providing for several, providing for some reserves, providing for an effective date.
Open up the public comment, and if you give a public comment, say now or vote for public comment? All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you. Moving along to B.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is ordinance number twenty twenty-three seven, and I would note that this is second reading and adoption of this ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Polacka, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the city of Polacka, Florida, certain age from territory identified as Polacka Cedar Grove Map Book Three, page one-ninety-two, lots thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, plus the north half of lot thirty-three, excluding official records, two-one, page one-sixty-one, R D, also that part of closed Hampton Road, official records book six-two-six, page one-eight-five, excluding St. Louis nineteen, parcel two-ten, twenty-six, sixty-eight, seventy, four-zero, zero-three, four-zero, five-ten, west town family, continues to the boundaries of the city of Polacka, providing for some reserves, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is the second reading for an annexation of this property, you've heard it before, it's for the closed red one, and we have a northeast corner of toll road and St. Louis nineteen. of toll road and then state rail nineteen. And they are, are asking to come in so that they can access water and sewer.
Of course. So Mama Baba asking for the, the loan change to high density. So, well, they said, we're going to change it to, I don't remember what I read the last time, to high density use.
It's going to see C two, commercial land use with a C two zoning.
So county, it was for low density, as I read, and then our use that we're going to, we approach it perfectly to high density, right? Am I right? Or was that reading some wrong?
I think you're looking at a different property. I'm not sure which one, but they
The one I asked about being contiguous on state rail nineteen.
So it was originally in the county, it was, it was a CR, commercial land use.
High density, low density?
Commercial.
It's light, just commercial.
Just straight commercial.
Right?
At the land use level of the low density. I've been this in the role of things. Commercial. The, the intensity level of concept and zoning category.
That's what I'm asking, that's why I'm asking the question. So is it low density or the county? That's what it's coming, or passing?
No, sir.
Light density, light density, I mean, it says light density. Changing it from light density.
For the land use, it's commercial to commercial. No, no distinction. For the zoning, it will be from putting in commercial light to city of Placa, commercial intensive, C two. But both of those designations are C two in the county and the city.
Just C two, I get that. This is an educational piece for me.
Right, sir.
So light density versus high intensity, yes. What, what?
There isn't much difference between the two zoning categories between the county and the city. They just call it something a little different. The permitted uses within those zoning categories are very, very similar.
Yeah, I'd say it's just educational. See, you didn't understand.
And that into your question?
Yeah.
Anything further, Ms. Walsh? I'm going to open up the public comments. Saying now, closing public comments?
Question?
What?
All in favor? I'm aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Ms. Grant?
Set again for adoption, ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh nine, ordinance of the city of Placa, Florida, providing the official zoning map of the city of Placa, Florida, be amended from Pudding County Commercial General Light C two to city of Placa, commercial intensive C two for the following property, five ten West Talz Avenue, Plac, Florida, three two one seven seven, Plac Cedar Grove, map book three, page one ninety-two, lots thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, W A, part of north half of the lot thirty-three, excluding official records book three forty-one, page one sixty-one, RD, also part of the closed Hampton Road, official records book six two six, page one eighty-five, excluding state rail nineteen, parcel number two ten twenty-six, sixty-eight, seventy-four zeros, zero three four zero, providing for severability, provided for certain reserves, and providing for an effective date.
Second.
Again, this is the second reading for the zoning change from county C two to the city of Placa, C two. I'm going to open up the public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Saying now, closing public comment?
You want me to make them?
No. No, I'm just thinking. Okay, all in favor?
All aye.
Any opposition?
This is often brought to you for adoption. It's ordinance number twenty twenty-three ten, an ordinance of the city of Placa, Florida, annexing the corporate limits of the city of Placa, Florida, for certain adjacent territory identified as thirty-eight fifteen Reed Street, part of the southeast quarter and the northwest quarter, official records book thirty-eight, page five fifty-eight, parcel number two ten twenty-six, four zero zero three six zeros, four zeros, contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Placa, providing for certain reserves and providing for an effective date.
Oh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a very small apartment property. It is located right at the entryway to Lowe's on Reed Street. It's on the east side of that entryway. There's currently a consignment store there. They are seeking to connect the water and sewer. But they have not been in the city, that's they need to be annexed in the city so that they can connect. Again, it's a very familiar situation to the last one, where it's going from commercial to commercial, land use and something. I'm going to open up the public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Saying now, closing public comment? Just a little, and just when I read everything over, you say Zaruba, I say Zeruba. It is Zaruba. And his spell could be U, not an A. His name is John Zaruba. It's actually U B A. It's not A B A. If you look at all his documents.
It's been misspelled.
It's been misspelled. His name is misspelled. Just for the record. Thank you, Madam. Okay, seems to be wonderful. When you look at the application
It's Zeruba.
It's, it's the way he writes it, but it is a U, not an A. It's Zaruba. Zaruba, got it. It's because John corrected me. Anyways, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Next, Ms. Grant?
Thank you. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three twelve, being brought to you for adoption. It's an ordinance of the city of Placa, Florida, providing the official zoning map of the city of Placa, Florida, be amended from Pudding County Commercial General Light C two to city of Placa, commercial intensive C two for the following property, three eight one five Reed Street, Plac Road, three two one seven seven, part of the southeast quarter and the northwest quarter, official records book thirty-eight, page five fifty-eight, parcel two ten twenty-six, four zero zero three six zero four zeros, providing for severability, providing for certain reserves, and providing for an effective date.
Second. Open up the public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Saying now, closing public comment? All in favor? Any opposition? You? Ms. Grant?
Madam Mayor, I will read the ordinance number twenty twenty-three fifteen. If I may, joining us via telecommunications technology is the city's pension attorney, Anna Paulson Parrish. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three fifteen, an ordinance of the city of Placa, Florida, revising the codenotes of the city of Placa, Florida, revising section two two fifty, bill forty-five, same investment authority and restrictions, providing for severability of provisions, providing for inclusion in the code, repealing or ordinance in conflict through way, providing for an effective date, providing for certain reserves.
Oh.
Second. Open up the public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Saying now, closing public comment? All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you. Ms. Grant?
Thank you. Again, being brought to for adoption, ordinance number twenty twenty-three sixteen, ordinance of the city of Placa, Florida, driving codenotes of the city of Placa, Florida, revising section two two fifty two eighty, same investment authority and restrictions, providing for severability of provisions, providing for inclusion in the code, repealing or ordinance in conflict through way, providing for an effective date, providing for certain reserves.
Oh.
Second. Open up the public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Saying now, closing public comment? All in favor? Any opposition? You run the C I O's. All in favor? I'm aye. Any opposition?
Madam Mayor, this is the resolution number twenty twenty-three R one oh six, the resolution, state mission, state block Florida, operating the Placa Fire Department to accept the twenty twenty-three FM global fire prevention grant in the amount of three hun, three thousand nine hundred dollars. The FM global grant award is intended to be the last for our cats for free fire planning and fire inspection activities, amending the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, about the, wait, I keep them on there.
Second. You too.
We apply for the FM global grant. They, they ordered it to us. We want to use these iPads for completing inspections, trying to do paperless. And also they play into the free plan programs. They allow to us outline the buildings where all the utilities are, where the closest hydrants are, and all the exits and all that sort of stuff, so we can protect our firefighters as they go into these buildings.
Any further questions? Hold on a minute, I don't know. It's a public comment? One?
One.
All in favor? I'm aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Cannon?
Yes, my only comment for you, I use, maybe work for something that's more formal than the rules we identified. I believe that's is that, but something that's a little bit more formal and something that's because that can be a little distracting, um, to say that they love you, but we know what it is, but there's something that's a little bit more formal. Because we are broad, so some of that is very, I'm saying.
Well, I did that because I know we needed something as a way to figure out who was going to be up next. And so prior to, we had nothing and everybody was just going in without following the Robert's rule of war. So that provided some, so yes, we, we would like for staff to do that, you know? Again, I don't think it's tacky. I think it was a way to at least let somebody know that you're up for next speaking as a, as a rule of one.
It was my
Just speaking out.
It was my comment and it wasn't towards you as a commissioner. I was speaking to what had been brought to my attention. It was not to, I appreciate you bringing some power. However, my request is to make something a little bit more formal. It was not directed to you. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
I'll have it.
My brother comments and you want to thank the staff for the wonderful job that they continue to do, day in and day out. We thank you for, I mean, all that I do and continue to keep the city, uh, mostly shine. Thank you.
Sure. Thank the Commissioner, um, thank the staff for the wonderful job you all who we just got in Tallahassee on Wednesday, and we got raised reviews. So a great job that you all did. Uh, council stay, um, a lot again. So thank you all for the hard work. Thank you for the perseverance.
It's, it's talk about specific, um, staff, that need to be recognized now. With, um, our assistant city manager, Donald Griffin, or his efforts with helping getting funds, Manny Tucker, as well as Sandy Krantz, um, and Manny, Manny Tucker, there. So those three people would give a rain review by our lobbyists who worked tirelessly to get us some funding and, um, the city of Placa is going to be very, very pleased with what we got coming down the pipe.
Thank you. With that, the motion for adjournment?
Motion for adjournment.
Thank you.
Oh, that's a lot of things I want to get. Now, thank you, Mr. Peter Woolman. I didn't meet you last time on the out and on remote. And I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to welcome you to the city of